People pose a substantial risk to our community in his continuing efforts to combat the spread of COVID-19. In concurring with their determination, I also find this meeting is imperative to the continued operation of the town government and services, which are all vital to public safety and confidence during this emergency. As such, this meeting will be conducted without a quorum of this physical body present at the same location. At this time, I also welcome members of the public addressing this meeting remotely. Even though this meeting is being conducted in a unique manner, under the unusual circumstances, the rules of conduct and decorum apply. So let's start the meeting by taking a roll call attendance. When each member states their name, please also state whether there's anyone in the room with you or during this meeting. So I will start. I'm Langton Plummer. I'm Chair of the Action Planning Board, and no one is with me tonight. Nancy?
Nancy Belanger, alternate, and I am alone in the room.
Okay. And Molly?
Hi, y'all. I'm the Select Board Rep., and I am alone in my room, too.
Thank you. Gwen?
Gwen English, and I am alone in the room.
Peter Steckler?
Hi, this is Pete Steckler, and I am alone.
Pete Cameron?
I'm Pete Cameron, and there's nobody here but me.
Okay. Jen Martel?
Here, and I'm alone.
And Aaron Brown?
Aaron Brown. My son Sam Brown may be in and out.
Okay, thank you.
Want me to introduce myself, Lynn?
Robin. Yes.
Robin Tyner, and I'm alone on the deck, except for the dog.
Okay. And Dave, you're here tonight with us?
I am here, and I am alone in the house.
Thank you. So the first order of business tonight is to approve the minutes of June 25, 2020. And I open the floor to that discussion. Thank you, Dan, for taking these minutes.
Well, Gwen, do you want to go first?
Pete Steckler has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, also Pete Cameron. So Pete Cameron, second. Pete, why don't you, Steckler, why don't you start, please?
I am happy to defer to others if they prefer to go first, but I guess I'll get started. So line 94, where it says should probably be left turn pocket as depicted, I just, I recall it was notable to me that Stephen Perna, I believe, had suggested that there should be left turn pockets both into the proposed development site as well as into the mobile station. So thought that could use some clarification. So line 144, I think the second sentence where it says that meeting will be critical, I think maybe add that scoping meeting will be critical.
Yeah, right.
And then line 173, at the end of the sentence, it would be great to add from Mr. Plord. And then line 184, and my internet was sort of going in and out, so I, I'm not sure if this is correct, but where it said investigated and found seven irises without flowers, I thought I heard it was seven iris locations, but I'm not sure. So maybe somebody could either correct me there or look back at the tape. Then, let's see, so line 213, this made sense when I first wrote it, but didn't when I looked at it again. I think it would be helpful if it said, Mr. Steckler questioned what evidence there is that the vernal pool at the front of the site had been excavated as suggested by Mr. Quigley. Something along those lines to clarify that.
You're kind of rewriting the sentence, those two sentences, yeah, yeah. Yeah, okay, yeah, it gets a little foggy, yeah, fuzzy, yeah.
Yeah. All that said, Daniel did a fantastic job capturing this conversation. 217, I think, add commission after conservation. I think that would be helpful. 246, where it says, Mr. Steckler noted site inspections, I would delete inspections and replace that with site walks by regulators are not intensive third-party reviews. Then the line on 247, where it says typically note the role of any of those organizations, I, I'm not sure what that means. I would just suggest striking that. Line 257, I would add at the end of worth due diligence, worth due diligence for the board's consideration of the CUP. And I would strike the following line where it says not sure how changes decision-making process for others. And then, let's see, 276, where it says would suggest it receive, I think change receive with the word review, functional evaluation as well. And then I think there was a discussion at 285 where maybe this was between Dave and myself about whether re-flagging needed to happen or if there's an alternative, a less expensive alternative of using spatial data with a mobile data collection device, a GPS unit to review the wetland boundaries, I'm not sure, but 285 didn't make a lot of sense to me there. Line 300, instead of 13, I believe that's CUP criteria number three. And that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask a question?
Yes, Pete.
I mean, you do a very thorough review. Thank you, Peter. Sometimes, though, you know, like you, you take the Petropolis stated conservation and DES, and you said add commission, but I don't know if he, do you know if he said commission? Because I, I mean, some of these changes are fine, but if they, if they accurately say what he said, then I don't think we should add, you know, words.
Yes.
Very well, and probably was what he meant, but if that's what was said. So do you know that these things and these changes, what was actually said?
I believe, I mean, he, because he referenced not just Conservation Commission, New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, he also referenced Army Corps of Engineers and the EPA. That was my recollection. I didn't go back and listen to the tape, but so I guess if you want to really clarify that, then somebody would have to go back.
Okay, I think that's what we should do, because I don't, you know, when you change the word review to request or what have you, any of those, is it really reflect exactly what was said?
Okay.
I want to, you know, because, because you can do that, and you can change the intent, if something was actually said. So I think the point is maybe we, you know, listen to what Gwen's has her hand up as well, but then I'd probably have Daniel go back, research this, and table, and, you know, because I think you have to, instead of needs clarification, I think we have to, you know, revise it and be right, so we can, you know, adopt something that we know exactly the wording that we're adopting.
Yeah, that, that makes total sense. If there's a better, if you'd like for us to cross-reference the tape before we make suggestions.
No, I, no, I'm not asking for that. Maybe, though, if you review them, I get them to you a week at a time, a few days before, if I could get them to you, if you could get me your comments, just send them to me. I could send them off to Daniel, and he could do the legwork, and maybe you'd be in a position to, you know, they're already get a revised version in front of the board that, you know, you're satisfied with, so you don't have to table. That, that might be the option. I'm not saying cite the, cite the, you know, you don't have to watch the meeting.
Okay. Okay. But let's hear, let's see what Pete has to say, and then Gwen.
Okay.
Pete Cameron? Line 90?
90.
We all know who Stephen Perna is, but should he be identified as, and his company be identified there? Again, nothing important. Continuing on to line 112, wasn't this Ray Farms rather than Rain's Farms?
What numbers are Pete?
112.
112.
It's Ray Farm, R-E-I.
And that, then, if that's correct, then you've got to go down to line, let me see, 114 and 118, it's the same change.
Good.
Okay. 144, let's see, this is more for you, Lang.
Yes.
Chair Plummer asked what will be needed to know regarding traffic to vote. I'm not quite sure I understand what you were, what you were getting at there regarding traffic to vote, to vote on what?
I guess it would be before we vote, or something like that, maybe.
I, it's probably, it stands okay, but I just didn't understand what the vote was on.
I believe I remember that, and he was asking basically, do you have enough information on the traffic to make a vote on the application as a whole?
All right, if that's so, then no one needed to say that.
Yeah.
Because we do a lot of voting on things. Okay, now, let's see, line 320, and this is, this is, this is the motion, and I'm not sure that I motioned to allow third-party review under, allow troubles me a little bit. We basically, I thought, were voting to retain an entity to conduct the, the third-party review. Am I wrong there, David?
No, I believe the intent, I don't exactly know what word you used, but the intent was to require it.
Yeah. I'm just.
Not to, not to allow it to happen.
Yeah, allow, it just isn't quite the right word, but I'm not sure which, which is the right word.
He can, he'll, he'll look at that, Dan will look at that.
Okay, then, finally, on 331, the, it reads the 13th is set aside for the CIP, that's August 13th, is it not?
Yes.
Correct.
And maybe we should indicate that. That's it for me.
Gwen, did you have some others?
Just a couple quick ones. And Jen, if you're, if you can look at this, too, on page, on page three, line 120, Ms. Martel noted the comment on the ULI study.
Do we?
Do we? Oh.
It should be.
It's the Urban Land Institute.
Oh.
I don't know, but I don't know what the comment is, and it's, it sort of doesn't mean much, just saying that you noted a comment. Do you know what comment? I don't know.
I think, I think, I don't remember exactly what I said, but I think it was basically just that I appreciated seeing the ULI study. So maybe Ms. Martel noted that she appreciated seeing the ULI study.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if there was something specific in the study that you, that should have been noted in the, in the, in the meeting minutes, but that, that works.
Okay.
Um, thank you. And then I only had one other, let's see, this is on line 327. My question, and I reworded this, and I don't, I don't know if it just didn't come out this way at the, at the meeting, but my question was, and it should be written, Ms. English asked if there is a page showing the limit of clearing, and Mr. Petropolis noted it can be seen on the control, on the erosion control and grading plan.
Oh, I see, yeah.
And that, that's it.
Any other comments? And Dave, you're going to work with Dan to review them?
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll wait for them to come back again.
Yeah, Daniel's on here, he's, he's listening, so he's aware of what you said, so he'll, as it always does, you know.
Thank you, Dan.
Get him back to you for the, for the next meeting.
The agenda calls for continued, continuation of.
Well, do we want to table them then till the next meeting?
Well, I'm just leading up to that. And in that request, I did, seeing the email, they did require, request that they continue the hearing on the 23rd.
I think, I think Pete was asking about, I think Pete was asking about tabling the minutes.
Oh, yes. We could do that, sure.
Also move it.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Doesn't need discussion, but we have to go to a hand vote. We have enough regular members, so no alternates will be acting this evening, so I'm going to start with Molly. On the table, motion?
Yes.
And Gwen?
Yes.
And Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Pete Steckler?
I'm an alternate, unless you just said no alternates are voting tonight.
Sorry. I just have you guys stacked together here. Jen Martel?
Yes.
Aaron Brown?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So I think that's all set, so those will be tabled, and brought back at a later time. Okay, now, assuming you have received Dave's email from this afternoon, I don't have or not, but the Gresset case is asked to be continued on the, our next hearing on the, on the 23rd. And Dave and I talked about that, so we're going to, it's already set there, but we just not sure what's going to happen, and we don't want to be stuck in a way as we are tonight that we're not wasting our time, but we could be working on some other cases, but not, did not notify good enough, so that we are doing what we're doing. So Dave, I don't know if you want to comment more on that at all?
No, I think, I think tabling it or continuing it to the July 23 meeting is appropriate. I don't know where the gateway is going to be at at that point. I'm working diligently trying to get a third-party wetland scientist on board. I mean, that's, that's difficult right now, everyone's busy. I did have a couple leads, and then they had conflicts of interest, so they couldn't move ahead, so I'm working hard to get that, and, you know, so I'd like to be on for the 23rd, that's the plan, but I don't know, and I, I would say, and if, and if that's the case, and then we don't get to them, you can always continue them till a later meeting.
Yeah, okay. So I would entertain a motion to continue, oh, what's the case number on that one? Well, I could look here, the agenda. Case number 20-2 to July 23 at 7:00 PM.
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Don't think we need a discussion, so I'll start again. Nancy, how would you, excuse me.
Yes.
How will you vote, Molly?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Gwen?
Yes.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Aaron Brown?
Yes.
Jen Martel?
Yes.
And I say yes. Let's see now, who didn't I call?
Um, Lang?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question just about process?
Yes.
What, what is typically the amount of time we give petitioners or, you know, people asking to be heard? What is the typical time that they give to not appear? Because I, I mean, I, again, hate that we're, we have this plan, nobody else is ready to go, so like, what does that typically look like?
I'm not sure I fully understand your question.
I may, I mean, I think it's on a case-by-case basis, and I'll address this case.
You know, I think it's just the facts.
What happened today was we received a letter from Timothy Britton on behalf of some of the abutters, and we sent it to you folks. I believe Mr. Britton also sent it to, to the, Mr. Parsay, the attorney for the applicant. And it raised some, a couple of legal issues. And I'm not an attorney, you know, I read it, you know, and, and then they, and then their attorney, Mr. Parsay, called me and said, you know, despite of getting this and seeing this, I think it might be best to, you know, give everyone time to absorb it and possibly seek advice from legal counsel, from our legal counsel. And I, I thought that was a good idea to advise the board, so tonight would have been, you know, could have been, you know, two attorneys with differing opinions and, you know, the, without, without town legal advice, which I think is warranted in this case. So that's why it was continued. So that, that's in this case. I mean, there has to be reasons, like in the past, sometimes, you know, developers have continued, it has to be continued, and eventually it's like, you know, you have to come back, you know? We've had cases like that, but it's on a case-by-case basis. This was the first one, and it seemed like a valid reason to ask for a continuance.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Yeah, that, that's what I was thinking, to just, if you recall last time, the, quite a lot of the time, the meeting was spent with attorneys, so talking to each other, but really more than us, which is nice to know, but we have better things to do, so, at any rate. So thanks for the question, Molly, anytime. I've discovered that John Gruder's not with us, and I've been thinking we, you're all set, so I need to, now in the next vote, I'll ask Robin to be, to act, if we get, well, we'll get to another vote or thing, at any rate. So Dave and I want to talk up a little bit about the, oh, wait a minute, why are we with this? Oh, so that case, Gresset case is now tabled till the 23rd.
And then, all right, one more question, because we had initially continued the Gateway case to the 23rd, and I know that there's some, some questions about what's going to happen with the wetland study, and if there's going to, you know, so is there like an order of precedence here?
Yes, the Gateway project will go first.
Gateway's first.
There, if they show up, we're not going to jump them, they were tabled to that meeting first, they will go first.
Okay.
Don't want to be in a position tonight, yeah, if we had known, I would have put some other items that are logged on the agenda tonight, but I, you know, I didn't know, so I don't want that to happen again, trying to avoid that, rather have too many applicants than not enough.
Yeah, plus you got to have, is it, that, you know, Molly, the public notice before the meeting, so you've got to have things.
No, I, I understand.
You know that stuff, yeah, yeah.
And was that voted on? Did you vote on that motion?
Yes, I was taking the vote, so, let's see, I asked, I'll take the vote again, just to be clear. I'll ask, and I'm going to have Robin act on this vote, please. So Molly?
This is to continue the Gresset project to the.
On the 23rd, yes.
Yes.
Oh, Robin?
Aye.
And Gwen?
Aye.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Aaron Brown?
Yes.
And Jen?
Yes.
And myself, yes, okay, tabled. All right, now, David talked about these other cases, and we chatted a little bit. August 14th, looking ahead a little bit, that's when we begin our capital improvement.
13.
Those are the, yeah, which?
August 13th.
13, oops, I like round numbers. 13 is a good number, though. Let me check my calendar, August. You're right. So anyway, the CIP will begin that night, and so I'm not sure, Dave, how many cases we have waiting to come, but we, we had thought, and I think we've done before, we might start that meeting at 6:00, so that we could work on that for an hour and then get on to other cases. CIP is not a case, but it's a, it's a, you know, responsibility we have. So we're looking for ideas, how else we might try to catch up on this, on our work, if you will. And I don't know, we could meet longer, certainly we can read more, deal with more than one case at a time. And, and/or maybe we could do a 6:00 starting time for, I don't know, two, maybe through August, September, something like that, or we could start in August, so, you know, or not, I won't say until we get caught up, but how can we get more time in the schedule to handle more than one or two cases? Or I don't know how complicated these cases are, but Dave doesn't feel, I don't think, correct me if I'm wrong, Dave, that you don't see many of those cases being, I'll say, long cases, I mean, a couple, typical cases, maybe a couple meetings.
Yeah, I mean, you never know what's going to happen, and who's going to, what, you know, what the planning board's going to think, I don't pretend to, to know that. They aren't, they're certainly not as complicated as the projects we have in front of us at the moment. A lot, you know, most of them are smaller scale, there's a couple of minor subdivisions, there's, you know, addition site plans, there's a few site plans that are additions to existing buildings and so forth, so, no, nothing, you know, too complicated. But we, I think, I'd have to check, I got the list in the office, but I think now we're up to 10 applications. So, you know, that's, I mean, you know, doing one application, a meeting, or something like that, that's, that puts us out, you know, three, four months already, so maybe I, if the planning board figures out what they want to do, maybe I'll, I'll look at them. I don't know if you want to do this, like, take, take a few that are less complicated, like a lotline adjustment, or, you know, a minor subdivision, or something like that, or do you want to continue to take them in the order that we receive them, which that's what we usually do and have been doing. And then I'll just try to put as many as I can on a, on a future meeting. But I'd like to know that, because I don't know, the Gateway and the Gresset application are still pending, so do we want to, you know, set aside one of the meetings in August to start hearing the other applications? You know, or what you suggested, Lang? Just trying to get some direction on, because people, folks keep calling me, asking me, when I'm, you know, when am I going to be heard, and I really don't have any, any answers right now, except sometime in the fall. Unless, you know, we, we kind of set some dates to hear some of the other applications.
Pete Cameron, you have some sense?
I'm troubled, because in the past two months, basically, all we've talked about has been Gateway or Gresset. And somehow, we're, we're, our hearings are being dominated by, well, we don't get more than, than one application any session, and somehow, we've got to get, bring a little bit more, Lang, a little bit more to, to listen to. bring a little bit more, Lang, a little bit more, uh, to, to listen to Mr. Parcay and, and Mr. Britton reargue these things before us. They're each going to take 20 minutes or a half hour. And we're, we're spending an awful lot of time, I think, on these cases. They're important. But somehow, we've got, we've got to cut down and at least say to the attorneys, and far be it for me to, as an attorney, to tell another attorney, he can't speak for as long as he wants. But nonetheless, I, I'm troubled that, that we are hearing arguments, uh, some of them over and over again. I, I may be way off base here, but I'm, I'm troubled that, that we're, we're, we're getting bogged down. And David, this is, goes to where you are. We have a whole series of, of things that we just can't get to. And I'm troubled by that. Um, having said that, I'll, I'll be quiet.
Sorry.
Gwen? You turned yourself off. Gwen? Turn your mic on, please.
I'm sorry for the interruption. It's my computer. Sorry.
Did you have any thoughts about this meeting? Situation?
Are you asking me?
Yes.
The first thought that comes to mind is that if we, if, if in any of these meetings, we decide to start early, I, I don't want to be in a meeting after 10 o'clock. I think all of us just get burned out and, and can't think straight. So I don't want them to be extraordinarily long meetings to try to squeeze in everything we can. Um, I'm, I'm comfortable if it's, if it's politically correct, I'm comfortable picking like a lot line adjustment and adding it to one of the meetings that we know might be a lengthy one. And I would, how we do that, I don't know. If we have one of the shorter, uh, like a lot line adjustment go first, I don't want them to have to wait for three or four hours in the audience, um, until it's time for them to, to present their case. But, um, and with the two, I respect Peter, Peter's comments. Um, but these are big cases and they're, they're huge developments. And I know we hear things over and over and over again from the attorneys, but, and from neighbors and other people who are interested in what is going on in these cases. But I think I'm not comfortable cutting them off. I'm, I, I think we need to hear what they have to say. Um, being brief would be good, but, but, you know, by the same token, I think they, I think it's important that whatever their stance is, they, they need to, to present that to us as fully as they need to. So I don't have any brainstorms other than that, I'm afraid.
Aaron Brown has his hand up.
Good. Aaron, let's hear what his wisdom is.
Well, first off, Molly, I appreciated your comment earlier because it is frustrating to schedule and get the band all together and not have any music. But I can't recall this ever happening in the time I've been on the board. So this is highly unusual, and our agendas are really different with the COVID stuff than they were prior. And we would typically always have a few things on the agenda, even if Dave or his predecessors were warning people on the agenda, we may not get to you because of things in front of you. So it's, it's, I think, just a strange time. Uh, but it might be, uh, smart to have other stuff on the agenda, Dave, just in case we run into something similar. Or, um, I think the other part, the first come, first served is always sort of been the, the way you operate, regardless of the length of the anticipated hearing. So I think it is hard for someone doing a minor thing, but it's also, if you think about how much bandwidth our board has, how much time we're going to spend, we're talking, you know, Gwen's absolutely accurate, 10 hours is a really important time to not be getting into something. So that's three hours a meeting, twice a month. That's only six hours. Even though a small hearing might be an hour for a lot line adjustment, that's an hour somebody else is getting queued further and further out. So my opinion is first come, first served. They get their application into you, David, and it's complete, and they're in the queue, regardless of how long we think it's going to take. But we might consider having, um, one of these large, more detailed cases on our agenda and not stopping the hearing, Gwen, but saying, you know what? We're going to listen to you guys until nine o'clock, and then at nine, we're going to number two on our agenda, which is this minor lot line adjustment, who's been waiting for three months to be heard. Because, you know, we, we have other business too. We're not cutting them off in their process, but we're also not letting them dominate our business, which, which we've allowed. But I think, given the nature of the times, that's where we are at and why we're here.
I think you're right, Aaron. I think it all started in, in, with our first go around because we figured, let's take a case and, and see how it goes. Well, what do you know? It was a major case, so.
Robin Tyner has her hand up.
Backed ourselves, backed ourselves into our own jam. So, yeah, yeah.
Robin Tyner has her hand up.
Okay, Robin?
Yeah, I guess a couple of comments and a question. Um, I like the idea of having topics at the end of the meeting with people that might know, hey, we might not get to you, but if someone cancels, you're, you're next in the, you know, in the tiller. So be ready to go. Um, I like that idea. Um, I also like what Aaron was saying about putting a time limit, um, at a certain time, then you stop. But my concern with that is at first I thought, oh, yeah, that makes sense, that they can keep it brief, is depending which party is talking and which case they're arguing, for some, it might behoove their case to talk for a very long time to intentionally drag this out to another meeting and another meeting. So I think we have to be careful with that as well. Um, and then, um, I had a question that now I'm forgetting. So if I think of it, I'll come back.
Okay. Uh, of course, as chair, I'd come and you set times, which is wonderful, but it never is convenient to close at that time. I'm not saying there shouldn't be, but, because I do think that's an idea. As long as we know at the outset, comes the hour, chair's got to stop it at some point, uh, about that hour. So, yeah. Okay, so what I hear, Dave, is, uh, bring on another case or two. One, and, and in that, part of that process, we'll limit it, limit the, quote, the big case of the night, whatever. We can, uh, are you still, what about, um, CIP? Still, would you be willing to start that one, uh, at six to get through the, that would, that would be the time when the department heads come in and present the, their request for the next foreseeable future, I guess is a good way to say it.
Yeah, starting the meeting at six on the 13th would be helpful because then I, I, you know, figure out how long the CIP would take, and then I'll add, um, some of the cases that you haven't seen before. Because we're both looking at gateway and the Gresset yield plan on the 23rd. And so if whatever happens, I don't know, but they're going to have to go till, you know, a later August meeting, or they get accepted, or whatever, they're acted upon, or what have you.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think what I'm hearing is that's what I'll do, without objection, to, you know, start the meeting at six on the 13th and put, I'll figure out, I'll go by the order in which we receive them. I heard that, and I, I think that's one of the way we've been doing it. And I'll just kind of gauge how many I think we can get through and, and put those on the agenda. Uh, and also, Jen Martel has her hand up, and Robin Tyner, I think, still has a hand up or may want to speak again.
Okay, Jen?
Um, yeah, so I was just going to comment, I think the August 13th, uh, 6:00 PM is probably fine for the CIP purposes for me. Um, I would request that we don't do that for a lot of meetings, though, because the 6:00 PM hour is a little tricky, um, in my household. So, um, keeping it to seven. And I think also for the reason that Gwen said, is like, if we start at six and end at 10, that's a four hour Zoom.
Yeah.
It's pretty long. Um, and then I just wanted to comment on Dave's, um, plan, which I think sounds good. Um, it seems to me like, you know, people, once they have an application in, would it be possible to just fill up the schedule and say, okay, you know, you're going to be on the August 13th agenda, you're going to be on the August, whatever it is, 26th, you're going to be on the September. And then, you know, if Gateway or Gresset has to get tabled, then they just have to go beyond that, you know? Because it seems like we've been saying, oh, well, we're going to hold these meetings and table them for this application. And I do understand that we have a time limit to make a decision on applications. Um, but I'm just wondering, I mean, it, it does seem like, um, it might provide a little impetus without having to put a time limit on them, but it might provide a little impetus to say, like, come here, be ready, and, and have the information and keep your arguments brief. Because if you're getting tabled, it's going to be for two months, you know? Does that make sense?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we thought of that. The only problem is, is that's assuming that the other applications aren't going to get tabled. And then all of a sudden, you got six other applications being tabled, and you're leapfrogging over, you know? That can get tricky trying to set, like, okay, you know, you're, this is your agenda, and then they're not on the next three agendas. But what if they get tabled, so they'll get tabled for two months? That, that's the problem. You're, I thought of that, trying to do that. I just, I don't know, I, it might work. I just, I've never tried that before. And it seems like if you start tabling, uh, several of them, it'll become, you know, their schedule will be out the window.
Yeah, yeah.
But any, just, just to remember, the, there is no time limit right now. Under the state of emergency, the governor suspended those requirements, uh, made a lot of modifications to the land use laws, and we usually have 65 days statutorily to act. Uh, you know, there's a lot of places that still aren't meeting. I mean, you, you don't even have to meet at this point. I'm not suggesting that. I think we keep going, but I just wanted to clarify that, that currently, as long as we're under this state of emergency and the executive orders in place regarding the time limits, those are suspended.
Okay.
Uh, Robin, did you think of your question?
I did. And I, I still like the idea of having, you know, a topic in the hot standby, just in case something falls off the schedule. But, um, I guess my question was going back to what I think Pete was saying, when some of these really lengthy meetings are predominantly lawyers arguing different, different opinions. And at some point, um, they're probably never going to come to agreement between them. And for all of us who aren't lawyers, is there any point at which it's appropriate for the town lawyer to, you know, kind of look at it and, and give us a steer so that we're not trying to decide which legal opinion is correct?
Dave can spend.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's what we're going to do here. We've done several of those. We already did one on an applicant, on this recent application and, and got you their advice. So, uh, we try to do that. I think when you're talking about the meetings, I mean, I think the chairman can, you know, dictate the flow and say, you know, be brief, and our, our planning board members can say, you know, let's not reiterate. You know, I'll try to do that, uh, in, moving forward and, and tell them in advance, you know, kind of stick to your points. Once you made a point, let's not belabor. And then a lot of times, you know, attorneys, they want to, they want to rebut. And then once they want to rebut, the rebuttal, and then they want to rebut, the rebuttal's rebuttal. So it can go on and on. And you got to, you know, kind of steer it in and say, okay, we're, you know, you've said your piece, we have what you have in writing, you know, we have enough information and close the public hearing. That's, that's a way you can, you know, as long as you feel like you have adequate information, you don't need to, you know, keep the public hearing open indefinitely.
Okay. Anybody else want to chat about what? So we'll, we'll go with, uh, Dave was outlining for us and see how we can see that way. So basically, getting more of the cases before us, um, and, uh, we load, or backload the agenda a little bit, to the best of our ability. And we will, uh, we'll do one 6:00 AM, 6:00 PM start, so we have time, an hour to work on our work of the, on the master plan. So we, we won't fall behind on that aspect. Yeah. So is there anything else, Dave, we need to chat about tonight?
No, I, I don't think so. August 13th, 6:00 PM start, we'll do the CIP. Then I will take the applications in line that are in the queue in order and put as many of those as I think that, you know, we could reasonably discuss. I'll talk to the applicants, you know, brevity is better, try to, you know, TRC has done most of these. We've already sent two or three review letters, and we already got their responses. So it's not like we just finished reviewing. Uh, staff is kind of all set with a lot of these. Uh, there's a couple still remaining issues with a couple of them, but we'll highlight those. So they should be just, you know, in a position for the board to discuss their issues and add. So that's what I'll do for the August 13th. Moving past that, we'll figure it out, but, because we're going to see what happens on the 23rd, but then I'll start putting, because it was originally the planning board discussed when they wanted to meet virtually, keeping it limited, keeping it one application. But I'll start adding applications to the future agendas as I think the board can, uh, you know, can, can handle it. Uh, and then you can, you know, you always follow your rules of procedure and end by 10, you know, but, but I'll try to gauge how it is, if that sounds good.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. And the only announcement, did you say like anything else, like planners announcement?
Announcements?
Did I? Did I mention the, I mean, I don't know if I mentioned this at the, at the last meeting. Did I mention the New Hampshire Planners Award for the housing project?
Yeah, yes, you did.
I, I hadn't met with the hack and a couple committees, just want to make sure. So I already mentioned, I think I already mentioned that to you. I knew on the, on the last meeting, on the 25th. So, um, no, nothing else at the moment.
Well, then, I guess, uh, if somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn, our next meeting will be on the 23rd at 7:00 o'clock.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Moving second. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you so much for coming tonight, and enjoy the additional time, Gwen.
Thank you.
One, emergency responders will always be there for the residents of New Hampshire. With this pandemic, responders and resources may be stretched to the limit. With your help, we can work together as partners.